Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council, a special meeting of the Madera City Council as the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, a regular meeting of the Madera Public Financing Authority Board, and a special meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Madera. If we can have roll call, please.
Mayor Commissioner Andrew Madellan.
Here.
Mayor Pearl Tim, Commissioner Steve Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Chairperson Cecilia Foley-Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Vice Chairperson Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Derek Robinson Senior.
Present.
Councilmember Commissioner Santos Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Donald Hawley.
Present.
Thank you so much, Maria. We have with us this evening from Value West Christian Center to lead us in the invocation is Pastor Lance Leach. If you'll stand with me, please, for the invocation.
Thank you. Let's power heads. Father God, it's so good to talk to you before we talk to others. We thank you for the wisdom that you bring. First of all, we want to thank you for all that you blessed us with, this nation, this state, this city. We are truly blessed. We're truly thankful for what we're surrounded with. And we also ask, though, that you would give us wisdom to manage the resources, the people, which is an incredible resource, our children, our youth, which is some of our greatest resources. Let us manage it well. Let us make the decisions and choices based on not only today, but also tomorrow. And we thank you for the beautiful session that's started with our school this year. We continue to ask for safety in your presence across our campuses and protection over our youth and our children and our teachers. We thank you for our law enforcement and our first responders that are even represented here today, that you would guide them throughout the city. As our streets are busy, our freeways are busier, we pray, Father God, that they would have safe passage, that you would protect them as they do everything that they're called to do in this community. For the council members, for the mayor, for those that are supporting them, we pray, God, continued wisdom and guidance, and that you would give them rest and their families. Also, Father God, as they serve our city, we thank you for their service and pray your blessings over them and the blessings over the city of Madera. In your name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. Ready to salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, we have one change regarding our consent calendar. Item number B five under consent of the city council meeting is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support from the Y Madera County regarding the high-speed rail authority against diverting funding away from San Joaquin Valley High-Speed Rail. We'd like to move that into a workshop, in the workshop portion, if council is okay with that. I'd like to move the consent calendar, item B five, to presentations number two.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve agenda with the change of moving item B five to presentations.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on that particular item. Is there any other item or any other changes to the agenda before we move forward? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I'm going to read public comment. This public comment will be for all boards and commissions this evening. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council or the commission on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council or commission. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor or the chairperson has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council and commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council or commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak under this definition of public comment?
Good evening, everybody. Khalid Chadri here. I want to make comment on this ethics, whatever, you know, ethics training and whatever ethics, code of ethics being written here. So our system of government is all about checks and balances. So it's about that. So here, I see that city manager has been given a lot of powers because of this code of ethics. The recent, and you know, you all passed that. So it's not right. So actually, if you go back, mayor did business with the city. Okay, so why, why, why not, you know, make former city manager responsible for that? How was it possible? Or even former finance manager? How did money go to the mayor? Another example, back then, our city attorney looked the other way for Brown's Act violations here. So here, I hope our current city attorney files with FPPC Brown's Act violations, plus mayor did business with the city, both of them, and with DA as well. Because I have dealt with FPPC, and eventually things go back to DA. Okay, a few more things, ethics. Here, your employees sit on Facebook. I caught one red-handed, and she retaliated. She sent me a bill for nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. No joke. Then another communication specialist spoke on behalf of the city to the media. Is it ethical, or, you know, is it within the scope of his employment? Was it, was it really? Few other things. So, plus, yeah, I'm being also retaliated through code enforcement as well. So please, you know, take a note of all that. And so please also file, you know, I will do that otherwise, you know, with the current employer of our former city manager. Wherever he went, send that to, you know, he allowed our mayor to do business with the city. Plus, if you could find, you know, where our former city attorney gets a job, or, you know, send that to employer as well. And I'm going to take care of finance manager, myself too. So thank you very much. Have a good one.
Good evening. Ron Montoya, Madera, California. Quick plug, I never visited California Grill, and they have a great California burger, side salad, excellent Diet Pepsi, and it's like a family environment. It's something that I feel guilty not going several years ago. But going back to the CFDs, I've been out here about two years now, and the Community Facility District Tax, and Cece, you've been great, you know, Santos, you guys have been great. You guys spoke up how we're not going to vote for CFDs, and then down the road, you guys supported Community Facility District Tax. And being part of this financial pain, my neighbor lost his home, not only because of the CFD tax, but we're also paying property taxes. On top of property taxes, high water rates, high sales tax. My neighbor lost his home. He no longer lives in Madera. We gotta do something different. You can't gouge future residents and forecast residents' monthly CFDs, and then there's no accountability. On Knox Street where I live, Keith and I, we had a couple of conversations, but we're going on our eighth month, and I still have a hole on Knox Street. And we give this city twenty-four thousand dollars a month. On the flip side, over there on Snore, off of Starbucks out there on the other side of the tracks, remember that hole caused by the rain? You know, the water valve broke, and this is not? I might be comparing apples to oranges, but that was fixed in a couple of weeks. Okay, now we're going on our seventh, eighth month. And to me, there's a double standard there, and it's not okay. Most of my residents are fearful. Most of my residents don't know how to come in and advocate and talk about, hey, what's going on? Why, why do our, why is it okay for eight months later, we still have a hole in our road? You know, we deserve a little more transparency. We deserve the respect of where is this money going? We give the city twenty-four thousand dollars a month, and times, that's a, that's a ton of dough. And my neighbors are all transplants, and the thing is, a lot of them can't vote. They're permanent residents. So your decisions affect people who can't vote. And we should be more mindful of that. Because when I go door to door, help, you know, encourage people to register to vote, what I'm finding is, the people who want to vote can't, and the people who can vote don't. And their message is, oh, this city won't change, this city won't change. It's very deflating, especially when we have a mayor here that owes a ton of money in taxes. My kids go to Madera South. He has money for advertisement, but doesn't have money for his tax liens. And why the double standard? I pay my taxes, you know, and then he has the power to implement more CFD taxes. Why is that okay? You have money for advertisement, money for golf dues, and it just seems like there's a double standard. You know, and sometimes in the, you know, I feel like they're vilifying people who, just like I stated in the grand jury report, vilifying people who come up and speak. It's not okay. And then burying the grand jury report, you know, I couldn't make it pass a couple of times to the city council meeting, but burying that grand jury report ten o'clock at night? We can't do that. We have families. Yeah, it's online, I appreciate that, but you know what? People act different when there's a camera.
It's well beyond, it's well beyond three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Madellan. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Jeff Beazenthal with Madera Fire Department. I'm captain at Station 57. Representing Madera Fire Department, we just want to show our thanks for all the support you've given us and just helping our department grow and get better. So we'd like to present to you with some name tags we had made for you guys. If we could pass them out to you now, that'd be great.
Awesome.
Is mine in gold?
Get that.
Oh, my gosh.
Yours is in gold.
Oh.
Cool, that is. Thank you, sir.
Oh, my gosh.
That's so cool.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just take my city one down. Take the city one.
And thank you for everything you guys have done for us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Those are fantastic. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move into the housing authority portion of the evening. I will pass the gavel over to Chairwoman Cece Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Madellan. At this time, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Madera. And with that, I will ask for approval of this agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
My understanding was that he referenced that, the approval of all agendas were.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, our city attorney. Moving on to consent calendar, are there any questions on our consent calendar from my fellow colleagues?
Madam Chair, I did want to just highlight on that item, B one. If we can put it out for discussion, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. So with that, we'll pull that B one for consent. So at this time, Commissioner Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, this item was brought before you because I had been appointed to the International Committee for the NARO, and I had asked our interim executive director to kind of guide me through this and see if this was something that we wanted to do. And speaking with the current president of the International Committee, she had suggested that I attend so that I can see what other international housing authorities alongside the Austin City Housing Authority, and bring back something of value to the community. I know that we have a conference coming up here with the League of Cities. I figured that we can always spread our resources around so that we can come back and bring something back to the Housing Authority. So I wanted just to make a comment on that. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions in regards to that. I have some information as far as what this event will entail, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask you. And if not, then we can always turn it to our interim executive director. She might also be able to address any of those questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for my fellow colleagues?
I don't have any questions, but just a comment. I think it's a great opportunity to meet with a number of other people. And always conferences are filled with great information, but I always like the measuring stick compared to other communities. Some are size, some larger or smaller. So I look forward to the information you'll bring back to the Housing Authority meeting and share with us what you've learned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please note that there is a conference, a national conference for NARO also, that's happening throughout that week. It starts from the twelfth, and it carries on to the end of the International Committee, which is more of a, I'd say, a five-day. This will be more of a limited, lessen the expense also for a housing authority. I know that we are under a budget, so I want to make sure that our Housing Authority also knows that in our commission. So thank you again for the opportunity.
With that, Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I move to approve item B one as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item C one, Ms. Bonprezzi.
Thank you, Chairperson. As you know, C one is part of our capital fund for 2017, which we're passed due and obligating. So we did have the bid opening and have awarded, we're wanting to award the contract to STW Contractors, Inc. They were the lowest bidder, very responsive. We have gone through the bid packages. We received just two. Everything was included that was supposed to be included. So I appreciate us, you entertaining a special meeting so we can get these funds obligated. So our goal is to get them obligated before the end of this week. So I'm asking for your approval of the contract to STW Contractors.
I'd like to commend staff and Mr. Benjamin on getting this through. It's a 2017, and here we are where we're at. So thank you for your hard work in getting forward on this project. Any other comments from my fellow colleagues or questions? With that, any public comment on C one? Okay, if not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move to approve item C one as presented, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to commissioner reports, if nobody has anything they'd like to ask, I would like to hold those until after our regular council meeting, if that's okay with my fellow colleagues. Okay? With that, I would like adjourned the special meeting of the Housing Authority tonight. And I hand over the gavel back to Mayor Madellan.
That's all I was waiting for. Thank you, Chairwoman Gallegos. Back to the city council portion of the meeting, moving into presentations, we have a wonderful opportunity to make a presentation this evening to Claudia Mendoza. And with that, I'm going to ask Councilman Donald Hawley to assist with that presentation. So he will take his position at the podium, and we are looking forward to his kind words.
Claudia, where is that Leon that you have? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council partners. City, you know, sometimes we need to look beyond what we see when we recognize people. And a lot of folks don't like to be recognized. They want to hide. No, not me. It's always not me. But I love to be recognized, so if y'all got something for me, just tell me. Claudia, on behalf of the city, we really want to thank you for stepping up to the plate when times was hard for us to figure out who was going to get us in the right direction as far as our interim city clerk. And we all thank you for the job that you've done and still working hard to do. So with that, we would like to give you a certificate of appreciation. I want you to put this in gold. I tried to get in to get a little frame, but I don't know what happened on that. But maybe next time. But it reads, "A certificate of appreciation presented to Claudia Mendoza in recognition in her valuable contribution to the city of Madera while serving as an interim city clerk from April nineteen, 2019 to August 2019. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication throughout the city and transition period." With that, I just want to say thank you. Appreciate you. And I want to list that, well, it was something that I had at home that I think that you might be able to use.
Oh.
So thank you on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Y'all were supposed to stand up.
I'd just like to say a couple of things. Thank you for this recognition. Serving this community has been a joy and a privilege that I have been grateful for every day for the past fifteen years. It's been an honor to represent the city as the interim city clerk. Also, it was a pleasure to work with the amazing city staff. Everyone was so helpful, and I've learned so much. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Deputy City Clerk Zelda Leon. She has a vast knowledge of everything city hall, and she was a tremendous help to me during this time. So, yeah, again, thank you for this recognition. It is truly appreciated.
Thank you so much, Claudia. Fantastic job. Fantastic job. Talk about keeping her composure. I have to share, the mayor signs quite a few papers that come from the city clerk's office. And in that time, Claudia was so sweet in calling, and then texting, and then another reminder text, and then another reminder call. And I can stop by and find you, Mr. Mayor, if you don't have the time to come down here and find me. And there was a few times where I was just waiting for her to just say, "Come down here and sign these papers." But she always kept her composure, very professional and very sweet. Thank you so much for your patience, Claudia. I appreciate it. The next presentation, it was on our consent. Item number two is the high-speed rail. This was, as I mentioned before, a consideration of a resolution. So with that, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe you're going to give that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Come members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez, city manager. The item before you this evening is a request by the Madera Y Committee to submit a letter to the High-Speed Rail Authority opposing any potential modifications to previously, to either previously allocated funding or potential future funding for the high-speed rail project through the Central Valley. So in terms of background, so the Madera Y is a consortium of different agencies that includes the City of Madera, the City of Chocilla, the County of Madera, the County Transportation Commission, the School District, the EDC, and the Workforce Investment Corporation. My understanding is that this group first came together a couple of years ago. It went dormant for some time, and a couple of months ago, it's been resurfaced. The concept behind the Y is to make sure that collectively, all the different players in Madera, that all of our interests are protected, and that we work as one voice rather than individual voices. Since that time, we've collaborated. The Draft Environment No Impact Report is currently out for public review. We have agreed to pool resources. We've submitted a letter on behalf of the various agencies, making sure, again, that our interests are protected. Since that time, what that letter did, it did catch the High-Speed Rail's authority attention, and we have been meeting with them for quite some time. My understanding that the Y reference comes from the upside-down Y, which is the only point on the high-speed rail line between LA and the Bay Area that's actually going to have a Y. So again, it's an upside-down Y. Here's a spaghetti chart. That's probably the best way I can describe it. That shows a lot of different routes and alternative routes. The high-speed rail has made their preferred alternative, in terms of, they haven't selected it, but in terms of their Environment No Impact Report, they have identified their preferred route, but they've identified some alternative routes, and they're also taking a look at those in terms of the environmental report. So collectively, the various agencies have gone together to say, how does this impact us? The one thing you'll note is that the City of Madera is on the southern tip, highlighted by the pink, it's pink on the overhead as well, by the pink square. So the portion that's being discussed right now is we're about where the existing Amtrak station is at, north of Madera. The existing station, south of Madera, already has a certified environmental impact report, and that's the part that's being constructed as we speak. So again, so this is a little bit north of the city. However, making sure that any of our interests are protected, really going into the future and forming a partnership with the different agencies was imperative, I think, for us to have one unified voice. So in terms of, I talked about this a little bit. So at these meetings, we've had city staff, county staff, and a couple of other different staff from the various agencies. We've had representation from our city council at the meetings. And at the last meeting, which was held about ten days or so ago, now, it's not, we're not absolutely confident, but we've heard that the High-Speed Rail Authority is starting to consider, or there's discussion at the authority by state legislators, that there's a potential option of reallocating some of the funds to either the Bay Area or Southern California. And so one of the things that we wanted to do collectively is try to be proactive rather than reactive. So we said, you know, this is an opportunity for us to talk about it, to make sure that we try to get ahead of it. Let's submit a letter basically protesting, or just drawing, you know, really advocating for our constituents to say, we want to make sure that any funds that have been allocated, or that will potentially be allocated, are not redirected to those parts of the state. I'm sure those parts of the state need plenty of money, but, you know, our job here is to make sure that Madera, that the city and the county are well represented. but, you know, our job here is to make sure that Madera, that the city and the county are well represented." So, in terms of the group itself, we've collectively said that our goal is to speak as one united voice. There are a couple of different facilities at High-Speed Rail Authority. We've been told that they'll be identifying the site locations in December. Again, that's tentative. That's nothing in concrete. But we have collectively said that our goal is to support one another. There are three submitted high-speed rail maintenance facilities here in Madera County. There's one near Chachilla. There's one just north of the city of Madera and there's one around Avenue 12, if I recall. We have collectively said that while each, you know, while the city of Chachilla, the city of Madera, and the county of Chachilla, or the county of Madera have probably individually have a preferred site, we've all said that we would be supportive of one another, just to make sure that it lands here in Madera. Exactly where in Madera, we're okay with. Of course, we all want it. There's great benefit to it. We acknowledge that. But again, the goal is to make sure we get it first. So, again, so tonight's item, there has been discussion of potential legislation. And that's why, you know, and that's why it's italicized. It's nothing in concrete, but that's one of the things that we've heard. So, again, so the letter this evening, it's going to be going before the city of Chachilla City Council. It's going to be going before the board over at the county of Madera. Again, just to indicate our opposition to potentially diverting any funds from the San Joaquin Valley rail. We want to make sure they've started it. We simply want to make sure that they've completed and that we're not being short-changed at the end of the day. This letter, in absolutely no way does it encourage, or does it lend support or any opposition to any of the facilities, to any of the potential site locations, or to any other facility? Again, it's simply saying, "Don't divert the money. We're simply saying, keep it here." And that's the end of my presentation. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to the council.
Thank you very much for that. Mayor Protem Montes.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Arnold, I was trying to figure out what was going on with this item earlier and trying to get information. The proposed legislation is pretty vague. I don't know if it's just going to be, we're going to stop doing high-speed rail. We're going to change it. We're going to tweak it a little bit. But my concern is that we don't have all the information, especially in this staff report, on what's going to happen, what is being proposed, but we're going to oppose it without actually knowing all the facts. So, that's my hesitation right now. Maybe if we can, you know, this will have, we'll have a discussion on this tonight, obviously, but if we can figure out or find out what the actual changes or the proposed legislation are and say, "Okay, we oppose this because," or "We would encourage this in lieu of or in conjunction with that," instead of just saying, you know, "We're not going to do anything. We're, you know, kind of drag our feet." And that's just my concern, right? Because I want to be cooperative as much as possible. I don't just want to say, "I don't want to do what you want" and that's it. So, a little more information, maybe. I don't know if, and again, we'll hear from the rest of the council on what their opinion is. But that's my opinion and that's my concern right now.
Right. So, the letter is somewhat vague, simply because at the time of the writing of the report, some of the information that we had truly on hand was extremely vague. So, my understanding that, can there be any potential legislation? I've yet to see it. I'm not too sure if it's even been published, but there's been discussion by some state legislators from the Southern California area and from the Bay Area. And so, when we caught wind of it at our last Y meeting, so the group collectively said, "Hey, you know what? We should probably just simply say, we don't want, so any funds that have been allocated already to be diverted." And so, again, so that's the reason why the vagueness of the letter, because we're not too sure exactly what's going to happen. But one of the challenges that we had was a timing issue. So, the goal of the committee was to submit the letter by November the 15th. The challenge that we had that the next time the city council meets would be November the 16th. And so, we are the very first ones in the area to be taking this to our elected officials for consideration with not the full story. And so, that I'll completely admit that we don't have the full story, but it was just, it was just, it was, quite frankly, we were caught in between a rock and a hard spot because we wanted to be sure again that we got the letter to the High-Speed Rail Authority.
So, what is the significance of that November 15th date? And is there, are there any drawbacks with us kind of holding off and saying, "Okay, we'll get some more information and then we'll thoughtfully oppose or change?"
If memory serves me, I think the High-Speed Rail Authority, I don't have my calendar. I believe they may be meeting on the 15th.
Yeah. If not the 15th, I think shortly thereafter.
Yeah, it could be shortly thereafter, but I believe their staff report's out, if memory serves me. So, don't quote me on that because I don't have a calendar.
So, we wouldn't have time to submit an opposition if we find out what?
So, we can definitely try. The city council is going to be meeting next week on November the 9th. So, we can definitely try to bring it back and that buys us a couple of days. So, when the staff report was drafted about a week or so ago, at that time, we didn't have any additional information besides what was provided.
Then I don't see a problem with that, but the letter should state that we oppose any diversion of funds. And I know that by talking to some folks up in Sacramento, that's what the plan is, to divert the funds to other areas. And that would be catastrophic for Madera.
Okay, so if we would, okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Rodriguez.
And I would add valley to valley.
Thank you.
Because initially, when the vote went out, that's what a lot of legislation agreed on, is that the initial construction would be valley to valley.
Okay.
So, I think the discussion after Governor Brown's address to this, Governor Newsom's address to the state might have scared some folks. And therefore, I mean, when you start adding Merced to Bakersfield, then you start looking at the ridership and a lot of these other bigger urban areas will say, "Well, wait a minute." I mean, the biggest need is in these urban areas where ridership is extreme. It's big. So, if we're not going to do what we promised the voters to do, which is valley to valley, then let's start diverting those funds where we really need them, which is in the South Bay and then Los Angeles. But, you know, this is very complex, but at the same time, we have to be careful on what we're supporting. And as an entity that we're in, I think that mentioning, yes, we don't want to divert the funds, but here's why, because we are supporting Merced or Bakersfield. That's not what the voters had in mind. And I don't think that's what Senator Rendon in Los Angeles meant. And I don't think that's what the mayor of San Jose meant either. It's valley to valley. And we have to emphasize on that because that is what's going to bring those, the people, the population in San Jose or that area, the Silicon Valley can no longer, they cost of living is so expensive. So, they need to find a way, but if you're not going to provide them the transportation that you promised, then, I mean, who's going to want to see Merced to Bakersfield? There's not a lot of ridership. So, let's make sure that we emphasize that. The letter does need some adjustment, but we need to be able to be very forward in what we want.
Okay.
And as a city, we should not be afraid of asking for that.
I agree.
For too long, Madera has been, has passed by a lot of opportunity and I think that's because we're not forward in what we are asking for. And we need to come together candid in the way we come with our discussions, but at the same time, we need to be very direct as far as what we're looking for. The not diverting the funds, totally agree. We're supporting this to this. I don't think that was the intention of what the voters initially wanted, valley to valley. So, my comments.
And so, just for clarification, so the map on the overhead right now is illustrative only. I happen to pull that just to give some point, simply to provide some context to the council and the community about what the Y was about or in terms of what we're discussing today. And so, and so, it's, again, it's completely up to the council. We can modify the letter however the council seems appropriate.
I think they're all very valid points, every single one of them. I totally agree. The issue with high-speed, well, there's many issues, but a lot of plans are vague and there's a lot of unknowns. But that topic that has come up that we should all be very, very concerned about is the new administration or the administration that's in the White House right now, I think sees a weak link. And I think Los Angeles and San Francisco area does as well. And if it's a money grab and there's money, monies to be taken from the central San Joaquin Valley, I think they're making a play for that. There was even discussion about in preparation for the Olympics in six years or eight years and things of that. So, the thing that is in our favor, you're absolutely right, is coming together. Y Madera County is a number of stakeholders that meet regularly. And just the summertime happened and it was difficult to get some people, but they came back strong for this reason, to be one voice and to speak not on behalf of the city or even the county, but in a lot of cases, the central San Joaquin Valley. And so, I believe strength in numbers is what we need to be and show High-Speed Rail that it's not just the city of Madera, but a number of us sticking together. So, I'd like to make that deadline if we could, if we can come together. If there's a small adjustment to the points that were given this evening, I totally agree. But I think we really need to have that letter in place and let the High-Speed Rail Authority know under normal circumstances, should you be allowed to divert that money to the San Francisco area, LA area, or any other area that was not part of the original intent? And that was to bring high-speed rail through the central San Joaquin Valley.
If the term or the phrase valley to valley would be appropriate, I have no problem either inserting that. I can bring it back next week at a special meeting. It's really the prerogative of the council this evening. I'll leave it up to the council.
I'm comfortable with the valley to valley.
Okay, fair enough.
Great. Any other questions or comments about this? Great, Arnold. Thank you very much for bringing that to the presentation, giving us an opportunity to discuss that.
Thank you.
Moving on to workshops. Next is a workshop on the downtown transportation study update. Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. At the last meeting, the mayor requested an update to the downtown transportation study. We took that to heart and we talked to the consultant to see whether they could go ahead and make it here. We considered having staff do it, but we thought that the consultant would go ahead and provide you more information than we could provide. On that basis, I'm going to go ahead and invite Ed Noriega up here and he's going to go ahead and provide you a presentation. It'll be a little bit more than an update on the outreach. It'll be an update on the entire study as it stands right now.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'd like to invite Mr. Noriega up.
I'm sorry. Arise. I got it. You do know where it's at. Thank you and good evening. As an update, the, for the project, the intent of the project is mainly to transform State Route 145 Yosemite Avenue into a main street. But it's also beyond that. It's, I think the city's desire is to really transform downtown Madera into a destination for residents and also visitors and making sure that it becomes a place of, a place where you can take your family, dine, and even be entertained in the evenings and whatnot. And so, a lot of the improvements associated with transforming the downtown area would be implementing some traffic calming devices that would make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists to be able to maneuver through the downtown area. And so, as another element of the project is to make sure that a lot of these connection points shown here on the screen right now are collision points along the downtown area that we need to make sure improvements address. One of the other elements also with the, this plan is to incorporate plans that you've already prepared. This blue area that's shown here on the map right now is the DOMA planning area that I think it's the, it has plans on how to transform the area through the, as an arts district. And so, with that in mind, we have some ideas on how to implement those traffic calming devices that would encourage pedestrian and bicycle activity in the downtown area. And a number of those elements are medians with landscaping, bulb outs, high-visibility crosswalks, as well as bicycle facilities. And these are just a number of samples of bicycle facilities. On the left side of the screen there shows what's called a Class 2 bike lane, where it's a striped bike lane. The bottom photo there is a buffered bike lane that shows a little bit of separation from the bicycle facility to the vehicles, providing a little bit more, a more, a safer facility. The middle image is there. It's called a Class 3 shared facility. So, the roadways are shared with the cyclists and there are specific locations and where these can go. And the one on the right side there, it's called a Class 4 cycle track. And you have one of those planned actually going down Yosemite Avenue.
I'm sorry, did you say we have one of those planned?
Yes, you do through your ATP, your active transportation plan that was prepared several years ago. The, there's a, within your ATP, your active transportation plan, there's this desire to deliver a Class 4 cycle track down Yosemite Avenue.
And so, are you working with Caltrans and their shop program and what they have scheduled for the next three to five years as far as improvements to downtown Yosemite?
These things would be, Caltrans is part of the process in trying to figure out what needs to happen through here. And so, as we develop this plan, and we'll go over the group that's, that we're reaching out to in putting together this plan, they are part of that group. You know, and so, other improvements to make it more pedestrian-friendly, of course, landscaping along the sidewalks, some street furniture, as well as, one of the things that we heard is activating some of the, you have a number of alleys in the downtown area that could be used as more of like an area that could invite the public to be, to hang out. You know, a lot of urban areas in cities, they do these types of improvements to, that can encourage people to use the alleys. And so, the, we can't do this stuff in a vacuum. So, we need to, as a group, what we do is we try to reach out, get the input from the community. And the bottom-left circle there is mainly, what the city has done is created the steering committee that allows to guide us in forming these types of improvements, putting a plan together. We go through them, then extend, show that to the public, get feedback from the public. The next slide there just shows what the steering committee consists of, all these community-based organizations, the city, Madera County, a number of organizations that have been part of the committee to try to give us feedback on how to put this plan together. And eventually, what the plan is, is to go to the community. This is just a number of activities that we've done. We started in March of this year. The second bullet there, there's from March to May. We started gathering information, trying to understand the project. We created a public participation outreach plan between April and June so that we can implement the outreach program with the community. We also created an existing conditions report to really try to understand what the downtown area looks like. And so, in late June, we had this walking tour. And this walking tour basically was consisted of the city, us, Mark Thomas, Rios, as well as the steering committee that helped us understand how these streets function. You know, whether the importance of on-street parking, where crosswalks happen, where people, what the community, how they actually get into downtown. So, we had some ideas out there with the steering committee on what those improvements would be. And based on that meeting, we're now in alternatives development phase. So, between July and October, here soon within about a week and a half or two weeks, we'll be providing some of these alternatives to your staff to review. And the intent is for, to meet with the steering committee once more before going to a public workshop in early November. And that, right now, we're looking for places to go to host the public, to show them what has been proposed as a plan to implement in the downtown Madera. And the goal of this ultimately is to have an idea of how much these improvements cost. And ultimately, it's trying to get the city set up so that you can compete for funds and it doesn't have to be all delivered in one shot. So, as a number of these streets are developed, it may be that the first item that's implementable would be street lighting. It could be installing a number of street lighting that makes the area safer in the evenings like that, right? And so, maybe that's one element of the project that can, that you, the city, can then go and get funding for. And maybe another element would be... And maybe another element would be striping, roadway striping. So it's this plan that you can incrementally deliver to then meet your goal of trying to create this destination so that hopefully it also encourages the business community to invest into their facades and whatnot. So to encourage that destination and create that destination as a place to visit for your residents and even visitors from Madera. And with that, and we have the Rios Company here also. If you had any questions about, a little bit more specific items about public outreach. That's the end of my presentation. The plan here is that to have, after this November meeting, there may be some tweaks to the plan. We'll hear, so right now, we've heard from the steering committee. At this November meeting, we'll hear more comment from the greater community. There may be some tweaks to that plan. And then we go back in January to present to the community once again of what we heard from them. And the goal is to complete this study and the plan in February of 2020.
Mr. Noriega, can you go back to the partners that you had listed?
Thank you.
And the steering committee. Tell me again, how often have you met? And can you give me a quick rundown of participation? Is everybody at the table that you list here, has there been favorable participation? Without, I'm not asking to name names or anything, I'm just saying, how has the participation been with this particular group?
So we've met twice with the steering committee. One was at the kickoff to talk about what the game plan was and how to receive feedback. That the goal was, one, to, for them as the community leaders, they hear, they directly hear from the community, to, that they would have a good feel for what the needs are of the community. So, one, it's hearing feedback from them. And based on that, putting together a plan that we then go back to the community based on what we heard from the steering community. So we met with them during, for the kickoff meeting. And we also met with them during the walking tour. So we met with them twice. And the goal, we, one of the items of distributing information is through a newsletter. And we have a, the, after the walking tour, we were supposed to send out a newsletter. But not that many people were able to, not all the committee members were able to join the walking tour, but they wanted to provide us feedback. And so what Rios and company did was they, after the walking tour, they tried to meet with a number of these members that wanted to provide feedback. And we were able to then gather that last meeting from a couple of weeks ago. And so now that everyone has provided some feedback, I'm not sure if everyone actually in the steering committee was able to provide feedback. But I would say maybe 80% of what's listed here was represented.
Good.
And based on their comment, we've finalized the newsletter. And we can share those to you this evening if you'd like, actually. But it's mainly, it'll be, once we get buy-off from city staff, then we'll be able to blast it to the community of how the results of that walking tour.
And I'll tell you the reason why I called for this evening. It was brought to my attention by a couple of community members that called me and said I was asked some questions about what I thought about downtown. And so, my concern was this. The city council, as well as Transportation Commission, has worked diligently with Caltrans about the state-owned highway through town and the restrictions and lack of maintenance and so on and so forth. We've had countless meetings with DOMA and the Arts Council. And we're working, albeit slowly, we're working in tandem, kind of like the High Speed Rail we just spoke about, as kind of as one voice. This is a very expensive grant that we were given, that I was hoping that we could incorporate what we've already learned, not a pie-in-the-sky kind of thing with a bunch of, here's some things you might possibly do, now go out and get the money, that's what I was afraid of. And so when I see some of the Washington DC-type bike lanes in the middle of Yosemite, that's not going to happen. I want to be sure that we get down to what we're really looking for and work together and not reinvent the wheel. So I'm trying to avoid another grant, another cookie cutter, another, let's just poll the community, put a ribbon on it, and then check the box. And so that's why I wanted to come back here. Because as a council, since we're the ones that are going to be asking for the funding, they're going to be asking us, whether it's grant funding or general fund dollars, since we're going to carry that load, it goes right through the middle of downtown Madera, I thought we should be on the front end, not necessarily on the back end of the bow. You know what I mean?
I do.
That's why I'm asking for participation. I don't know if our engineering or planning department was part of the walkthrough or the invitation. I see city of Madera, I also see county of Madera. So I'm just, I was curious about participation. I'm curious about, I don't want to falsely lead our community and say, what would you like? And they give a lot of input, and then it does not happen. Because it's either too expensive or somebody's going to put the stop on it because we should know from the very beginning that certain things are just not going to happen.
Totally.
I love community input. I absolutely, this is not a city council thing, this is a city of Madera thing. Our downtown has needed revitalization for a long time. And the only way we're going to do it is partner with a number of people, which we've already, not only publicly, but we've financially partnered with DOMA and the Downtown Association to have this project move forward. So that's why I was really hoping that they're part of the discussion and we're not trying to do two separate entities to really kind of accomplish the same thing.
Absolutely. And I think we have heard from the community about planning too much and not implementing what's planned, right? And so, we're very mindful of putting together a plan that's implementable. And one of the ideas is that there are a number of funding sources for projects, but usually, a lot of these funding sources comes in bits and pieces. You don't get the entire set of funds at one time. And so, the idea for, our goal for this report is to be able to show what those funding sources are, how much these improvements are, and they're separated. That way, as these funding sources become available, one, two, three years from now, you have a document that you can point to that says, okay, so there's $500,000 available. This plan may cost $10 million, but lighting down here and some sidewalks, we might be able to deliver those things for the amount that we can go after, let's go after them. But, so that's the goal for this report, is so that the city can, it's almost like a menu of improvements that the city can then start chipping away at. So over the course of time, you're able to do it.
Sure, I just want to be sure that what's on the menu is available.
And also, and that's an interesting point because with this grant, Caltrans actually wanted to look at Yosemite Avenue with a road diet. And if, what a road diet is, is that you're converting a four-lane road into a two-lane road by creating additional facility on the outsides. So they're saying that to, they want us to study that. But the reality is, it's all about operations for Caltrans. They're about moving vehicles through their facility. And so, there would be another study beyond, a road diet will be part of this study. But I can tell you, it's probably one of those pie-in-the-sky ideas that will never get implemented unless Caltrans relinquishes the right of way. So however, they, Caltrans has moved towards looking at studying road diets for the downtown areas of several of their state highways. And it may be that if operations don't suffer too much and there's another way of getting vehicles through a state route elsewhere, then it may be able to be implemented. But that's, I would suspect that for the immediate need for the downtown area and transforming it, that would be one of the last items.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you for that. There's some council members that also have questions. So I'm going to ask Councilman Hawley.
Yes, thank you. I noticed this, you have the NAACP on there twice, probably a misprint.
It is.
Okay, but my question is, as a council member that shares that part of that district, I was not notified. And I don't know if the other council was notified that shares the other half either. But it, you know, when I look at things like this, when they tell me they went to the community, as looking at the southeast side, I see nothing over there besides Leyton Jewries that tells me that that's how far they went, in the police department. I know the Downtown Association covers the whole downtown. And so I'm wondering how, who sat down, and I'm quite sure I see the city of Madera, but I'm still concerned on what kind of input you got out of this from the southeast side residents.
I don't know exactly where everyone is from, so is there something you might be able to add to us?
And the reason I ask that question is because we have a lot of churches over there in that neighborhood, and I don't see where none of them was sent a letter of participation. As you look in the southeast side, there's a lot of churches, that's African-American, that has a lot of residents in that area. And I see nothing that covers that part besides the NAACP.
Yes, so the steering committee was already formed. The city was proactive in forming a steering committee as part of the public outreach for this project. And the steering committee already had representatives, where the invitations for the steering committee did not go to the entire community just yet. So for the project, they were the representatives of these organizations that the invitations went to. I'm not familiar who at the NAACP got invited, but this was the list of members of the steering committee that we initially reached out to for the initial meetings. Not quite out to the main public yet. Sam, if you want to add anything?
No, we, good evening. My name is Samuel Norman with the Rios Company. We are actually involved with the outreach on this project. With me tonight is my partner, Angie Rios, and our account associate, Doug Maderas, and also Rob Lorenz, with, Mark Thomas is here as well. But we did reach out to Gloria Brown of the NAACP. She has not returned any of our contacts that we've made with her. So we did make an effort to get in touch with her. What we typically do when we are doing outreach on a project like this, and we've been doing this for about 25 years in Central Valley, is that we like to sit down and actually talk to the people so that we can, one, find out how information moves through the community. For example, we met with the CEO or executive for the Cameron Clinic. We then met a second time with them, with their director of their promotor program. And we met a third time with the promotor program itself, which will be helping us get the word out to the people. We've met with the Public Health Department, with, we've met with the deputy executive, deputy director there. We've met with Debbie Bray. We've, actually, we have a whole list, I don't know if we want to go through all of them, but we-
I see the list, I'm just-
Yeah, so we, but we aren't through with that process. We continue, we'll continue to talk with people. And if, I would like to follow it with you, if I can, if you can give me some names that we can add to our list, make some contact with, that's definitely what we want to do. That's what we're in the process of doing right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
I have a question about the list. When was the steering committee created?
I'm going to jump in to go ahead and discuss a little bit about steering committee. The steering committee was part of the requirements from Caltrans. So prior to us going out with a request for proposal wherein we selected Mark Thomas, we set up a steering committee in basically what Caltrans would like us to do. The steering committee was pulled together of various business, from various businesses and interest groups or stakeholders within the area. They were used to go ahead and assist in preparing the scope of work for what went out for a request for proposal. They represented the first part of this. So once we got the steering committee together and we got the request for proposal, at that point, when we moved into the project, we were going to be pulling in a whole lot more interested parties, stakeholders throughout. That can be churches, that can be everybody on the steering committee.
But when was this committee pulled together?
Oh, it was months, probably six months plus prior to the-
Okay, so we have people on the steering committee that we didn't even contact that were listing here. One of them is our police department that was not contacted, listening here. You're listing NAACP, Gloria Brown never sat down and talked and didn't give input here. So as a councilwoman, I'm out in the community, just like my fellow colleagues at neighborhoods, asking us what we're doing for downtown. And here, we have, we don't even know who to kind of connect the dots with that are on this committee. So my take is, the councilwoman, when they do, the committee met a few months ago, were there minutes taken so that as council members, we can find out what was said? We can be on the same page, we can go out and give that information? Because I'm sure they hear it as much as I hear it, what's going on with downtown? Especially after our parade, I heard it from six people that day getting off the fire truck, what's going on with downtown, what's going on with downtown? And a couple of these people are on this list and they had, they didn't say anything about this. So that's the concern I have as a councilwoman.
Sure, I'll, yeah. I, believe me, I completely understand.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of the minutes emailed to us and the list of the people that you have contacted? So that if we have questions, we could go to them and say, hey, did you get, you know, like the mayor saying that he got a phone call saying, I got asked questions, not sure why they're being asked questions, a little bit that we can't answer as council members because we don't have that knowledge? So that's my concern.
I just wanted to jump in for the steering committee, I'll let them take it from here. And by the way, when we, when you, when I watched your face when they mentioned the bike, the bike racetrack, or however we- The cycle track. Yeah, that does show up in the ATP, but in reality, that cycle track, it can't go in without removing parking. We can't do a lot of things without going on the road diet. So the ATP, that represents what a vision was from community members who participated in it, what, three years ago or so. Because that came about and showed up in the ATP, it didn't necessarily represent the reality of whether we could actually do it. This, they'll give you better answers in terms of whether these things, some of these things can be done.
Thank you for bringing that up. I serve as chair as Madera County Transportation Commissioner, along with my colleague, Councilman Jose Rodriguez. And I've seen the ATP, and in discussions with that ATP, my concern there was exactly that. It's pie in the sky, it's check the box, it's community input, which would be great if we could implement that. But let's not go down that road and waste time and money on something that we know is not on the menu.
Yes.
That was my point to you. And let's discuss something that is tangible and real. And yes, there's money's out there to get, but it's going to be easier to get a $10 million grant than it is to put bike lanes in areas that it's just not going to happen. So I don't want a false hope to the community. I want to really discuss what we can and cannot do, and let's not dwell on what we can't do and work with what we can do to revitalize downtown.
Yes, and they are exactly right. This report does represent the basis for going after future grants.
Yep.
Without this report, it's a lot harder.
Yeah, and that's why I want it to be real. When that grant becomes something real that we can present as far as grant dollars, that if we had the money, it's the only thing we're lacking, we can implement these things, then I'm totally on board. Not something that is just unrealistic. Councilman Garcia.
I wanted to look at this Leadership Council of Justice and Accountability. Is that the Fresno group? Oh, they have, they have an office here? It was to me, okay? All right. Yeah, that was my, that was my question. I was concerned that if we weren't given a seat at the table from Maderans, that would be a problem. But you're saying that this is an organization that is here in town.
Yeah, I need to be on the microphone.
Saying that the organization has offices in eastern Coachella Valley, Fresno, Sacramento, and Madera.
Excuse me, where's your office located in Madera? Where's your office located in Madera?
Our office is in Fresno.
Wow, I just thought I heard you say we have offices in- Wow, I just thought I heard you say we have offices in Madera.
No, we were talking about the organization that he had asked about, the Leadership Council.
Justice, where's that office located in Madera?
I don't have the exact address on it.
If we can go back to the timelines now, Mr. Noriega, and just kind of follow up with where we are. So we're, we're, the development of altern, we're, we're kind of in that area right there. The walking tour has been done, and, and I was told that not everybody participated, but for, if they didn't, that they still reached out to you and said, we, we still want to at least give our input. So that was done. So are we finished with the development of, of alternatives?
We're, we're, we're almost done. We're in the process of wrapping that up, and we'll be submitting, uh, some of these improvements, proposed improvements, based on what, based on the feedback, uh, to the city here soon.
And my passion, and I want to say our passion for this, was, Caltrans was very gracious in really helping us go out for this grant. It took a lot of work, a lot of people, um, our grants department, MCTC, all of us to come together. This is an over $300,000 grant that for the last couple of years, we've been telling our community that we, we can't just throw something up against the wall on downtown and see what sticks. The best laid out plan is what we're going to do, and that's what we had offered, and I want to be sure that we offer that. Uh, not, again, I'm going to reiterate this, not just we check the box and, and here's some options you take at city council and run with it. I want to be very real on what we can and can't do, and, and not go after the pie in the sky things, and, and have a well-laid out plan that we can take to Sacramento or Washington DC and go after these transportation dollars. I, I realize that money is scarce with transportation dollars in California, but I do know that, that it takes time, and downtown Yosemite has a plan in place already through their shop program, that over the next three to five years, that they will be resurfacing downtown. I don't know if this conflicts with that plan or not, but they're not going to do the same job twice. So I, I want to be sure that we're working with those partners.
So, uh-
We are aware of that, and I, I don't think that they're going to change anything with regard to that. Uh, the one thing that has concerned me is they are coming through with an ADA project where they're going to go ahead and fix the ramps at the various corners.
Right.
That, it would be fantastic if we could go ahead and take the funds that they're putting into those ramps and save them for a future project. I just don't see that it's feasible to go ahead and save that. Right now, we have multiple ramps throughout town that, that don't meet ADA, and they're, they're going to fix them. There's a whole lot of other problems with, with, with those streets at the, at the moment that, that I am aware of.
Yeah.
Many of the sidewalks are, are, the slopes are just too steep for ADA. Many of the sidewalks have, uh, have issues with regard to the basements down below, and we've had at least one person who's fallen through on the sidewalk, uh, up to their knee going down into the basement. They're not, they're not fixing a lot of those. So it's, it's a start. I, I would love to have that funding be reserved, but I, these grants may not come through for 10 years. You know, we, we get this plan and, we, we get the plan in place, and we go, and we try to chip away at the things on there. And, uh, it'll, as they move through the process, it'll probably be a, a matter of choosing priorities. What do we want to do first? Do we, do we want to go ahead and look for something that creates a sense of place, additional trees? Do we want to go ahead and do ADA accessibility, where, where we need to do, where we know we want to do it? Where do we want to do that? I, that's, that's the thing that, that we'll have to make a decision on, and what, and what type of grants are going to be available for us to do that with.
Sure.
You know, some of them will allow us to go for the aesthetics, get the trees, uh, street furniture and all that. Ball bouts, it's not just, the DOMA study came up with, uh, opportunities for, uh, the ball bouts at the corners to go ahead and reduce the crossing distance for pedestrians, but, but they didn't stop there in, in that study. They increased, they added additional ball bouts mid-block so that they could go ahead and create potential for, for sidewalk cafes and stuff like that. They've, they've got a lot of stuff in there that, that, uh, Mark Thomas is going to be considering and presenting. It's, 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 it's a choice in, in what we, probably a choice in what we want first, and how we get there, and, and how we target our grants.
It's always a matter of funding and then our priority. Yes, I get it completely. Thank you for that, Keith. Any other questions? I'm sorry, was that, I don't, sure if that was the completion of your presentation or not?
It is, but I did, I wanted to add that, um, uh, in the development of alternatives, based on what we heard tonight regarding the cycle track on Yosemite, um, we will present options to the community that shows this is your current, uh, plan in the ATP, but however, it's probably an item that will never get delivered, so there are op, here's another option of doing it.
Sure, sure.
So, uh, we'll make sure that, uh, what goes into the report is something that's fundable and that can be implemented.
Thank you. I, I just think it's, it's realistic.
Absolutely.
That's all. Again, reaching out to the community is absolutely great, that's, we need to. This is, this is their community, not just ours, but I think you've, you've answered our questions. I appreciate that. I think you, you kind of see our perspective.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate you coming down here and, uh, and spending some time. We'll look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
Thanks to Reels Company for coming down here. Thank you, guys. Moving on to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it'll be considered separately. That being said, I will ask if there's any council member wishing to pull a consent item. We've already removed item B5, so this is items B1 through 4.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar, removing item B5.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded? Is there anyone from the audience wishing to discuss or pull a consent item? Seeing none, all those in favor to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I was supposed to say something else, but I lost my train of thought, then all you guys said aye, so I'm not going to say-
I checked the boxes.
Did we? Nice. Thank you for checking that box. Moving on to item C1. This is an update on the status of the groundwater sustainability plan, affectionately known as the GSP. Receive update and public comments and provide council input. Mr. Helman.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is just a really short update. Right now, the study is, uh, in review, the draft, uh, GSP. Uh, but what's happened in the last month is, uh, mainly associated with the data management system. Uh, and I'll go ahead and give a little refresher on what the data management system is, just in case. The data management system is where we're going to be pulling together all the information that's been collected for the last several years. Information on the wells, how deep they are, uh, what they're, uh, how, where the screens are, where the, where they intake the water, um, the various different types of soil types. With every well, there's information on the soil. When they drill a well, they take samples, they figure out whether it's sand, clay, um, whether there's contaminants in there. They, they take all this information, it gets in, they get to know that, they document it, and all that stuff will be going into the model. Uh, what the well deaths are over time, year to year, uh, they'll keep that in there, we'll be able to track all the wells through, that are, uh, included for study throughout the, throughout the Madera sub-basin, and know where they're going. Are they, are they staying the same? Are they dropping as expected during the, what's called the, um, I'm going to go ahead and get the name wrong, but, uh, over the course of 20 years, uh, they'll work into the plan. Uh, over that course, 20, 20 years, from January 2020 to 2040, they do expect water tables to continue to drop. But as the, as the water tables drop, uh, we'll be implementing projects, both on a city level, we have two projects, and throughout the county. Uh, they'll be watching those to see what the response is to those projects. That model, we'll keep track of it, and we'll use it for annual reports. Uh, what we get out of the annual, what we get out of that, uh, data management system, we'll transfer into the annual reports, and we'll present to the state to show how we're doing. Uh, that data management system, uh, we put out a request for proposal. We, we received four proposals. Two of them were considered, uh, qualified to go ahead and move on to a, uh, an interview in person. Uh, they were both well-qualified, in my opinion, uh, so we'll go ahead and move forward with those. Uh, also during the time period, we've received nine written comments. Uh, that was the way it was when I wrote the report, it's, it remains that way. I've not seen any additional comments come in. Uh, upcoming events, uh, October 22nd, we have a coordination committee meeting. Uh, myself and Derek, at the very least, will be at the meeting, Councilman Robinson, uh, we will be at the meeting at the very least, others are welcome. Uh, that meeting, as I indicate here, will summarize the GSP, and it'll allow for a question and answer session. It's something that's required for us to do prior to adoption of the GSP. Now, December 18th, uh, the city council will consider adoption. Uh, I expect to have our consultant present at that meeting to take us through it. Uh, with that, I'd recommend actions, receive public comment, and staff will accept, uh, input and suggested modifications to the GSP if there are any.
Great, Keith, thank you very much. Mayor, uh, Proten Montez has a question.
Just had one question. Was there, were there any common themes with those nine written responses?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Were there any common themes in those nine written responses to the, to the GSP, the draft?
I think my ears are screwing up on the comment deemed-
Common themes, like-
Oh, common, common themes, it's my ears. Um, I, I, I didn't note any. I noted that, uh, I know that one or two of them were repeats from, uh, from some emails before, but I don't know that there's any common themes. One, one of the, one of the things that we can expect to see, though, uh, because one of them are the comments, are how are we going to do mitigation on, uh, on wells that go dry? Uh, as we, as we go down, go through the 20 years, there will be private wells going down, um, and the impacts to the region, uh, or the impacts to those wells are primarily becoming from, uh, areas outside the city. We represent about 2% of the, uh, of, of the sub-basin. As such, our impacts are minimal. Thus far, it looks as though, it looks as though the, uh, the, the technical committee will be representing, recommending that the impacts be paid on a proportional basis, meaning if we have 2% of the impact, we would be paying about 2% of the, of the costs of those mitigations, uh, subject to, uh, subject to a determination that there will be a mitigation fund, uh, provided by the various GSAs. Our GSP, we have, uh, four, uh, agencies involved, the City Madera, the County Madera, Madera Irrigation District, and Madera Water District. They're all participating between them, they have something in excess of 200,000 acres, and we have about 10. Um, and generally speaking, uh, our impacts are relatively minor. Um, our, um, our projects will generally be in place almost immediately. By the year 2025, our projects will be complete. One is the Berry Basin, where we take in water, the other is completion of our water meters.
Good, very good. Any other questions, Keith? At this time, I'll open, I'll open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for its recommendation. I, there's, we received the GSP status update, and I, we just received public comment. Is, do we need a motion, Hilda, for that, or?
You do not need a motion, but if any of you individually wish to, so, so, give a comment to Mr. Helman, you can do that at this time, or you can do it afterwards.
I think your status update is spot on, Keith. I think you fielded the questions. We, uh, you have direction, so I, I don't think there's any reason to, to formally make any kind of voter motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item C2. This is consideration of a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the Benar Municipal Golf Course Operation and Management Lease Agreement between the City of Madera and SGM Inc. Mr. Scarborough.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight, council, council will be asked to consider an amendment to the golf course agreement with Sierra Golf Management. This will be very brief. In November of 2009, the city and Sierra Golf Management entered into an agreement for all municipal golf course maintenance and operations. In October of 2014, the agreement was extended for an additional five years per the option to extend included in the master agreement. And October 31st of this year, the extension expires unless extended by mutual agreement of both parties. Staff and SGM have both verbally consented to extend the agreement for a period of 180 calendar days to allow further negotiations between the city's ad hoc committee and SGM. This will allow staff and the city's ad hoc committee sufficient time to negotiate the terms of a new agreement. Excuse me. The base rent during the proposed 180-day extension would be $20,000 plus $2 per round of golf. Additionally, SGM would be required to complete a minimum of $25,000 of capital improvement projects during the 180 days. All other terms of the original agreement remain in effect. I'm available to answer any questions.
You weren't kidding about being short.
Very short.
We know you're a little bit into the weather.
Uh, very much so.
So, thank you very much for that. Councilman Garcia.
Might want to wipe this off.
Um, I'm wondering, I'm wondering what's taking so long to negotiate this, and why do we need to extend it out another 180 days?
Well, I, and I'll speak. The, the ad hoc committee had a, a difficult time in meeting ourselves. I think we met maybe three times prior, um, and when we met, um, we actually had a lot of questions when it came to the contract. And so, uh, with our finance director not here, and relying on, uh, interim at the time, it, it took a little while to get some of that information, and scheduling was an issue. Um, once we did find that information, and we kind of spoke on behalf of the council and the community, some of the issues that needed to be brought up, um, we then asked, uh, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Scarborough to meet ahead of the ad hoc with SGM, which they did a few weeks ago, and then we met with them just this morning. But since we only have one council meeting, possibly no council meetings left at the termination of their contract with the end of the month, we thought it'd be prudent to make sure that we went over the contract, we brought back an explanation and kind of direction to council by way of this report, um, but we all agreed this morning that we're not going to take the next six months. As a matter of fact, we have another meeting with them next Wednesday so that we can finalize this. We just felt comfortable with being status quo for the next six months, um, so that we can regroup as an organization here at the city, we can let them know, um, if this is something we're going to move forward with or not. And I can tell you that the initial meeting that SGM met with, with just, uh, Arnoldo and John, um, our team really kind of laid out a lot of the concerns we have with Madera Municipal Golf Course, and we're very frank and blunt with them. Um, and then we met with them and shared, and supported those concerns, as well as the concerns from the community, uh, Councilman Robinson and Councilwoman Rodriguez and myself, since, over the last six months, when we agreed to meet, and I think we can all attest that we've taken a number of phone calls from the people in the community over concerns and questions, and we shared that with them in what seemed to be a very brief two-hour meeting this morning. We probably could have gone on a little bit longer.
Absolutely.
And, and I will say that, uh, SGM acknowledged every one of our concerns, um, they shared, uh, their thoughts with the concerns, but they did not disagree, uh, with those concerns. So, in, in order to move forward, and again, this is if, we, in order to move forward with either SGM or, or quite possibly with somebody else, um, this is a reflection on the City of Madera. This is not their golf course, this is our golf course. This is the City of Madera's golf course, and we wanted to make sure that they heard that message loud and clear, um, and, and they did. So it will not take another six months before we get an agreement, I can assure you that. We just thought it would, for, for ease of contract purposes, it would be prudent to just ask for a six-month extension as we continue to negotiate. Um, I won't promise you that next week we'll have something done and signed, um, so it's just maybe more of a, of a comfort or buffer, but we are making this a priority to, as quickly as possible, find out if we're going to continue to move forward with SGM or have to go back out for an RFP.
If I may add, if I may add, Mr. Mayor-
Please.
You know, I think you said it well, it, you know, timing issue, timing was an issue, but it was important also to hear what SGM had. After we had delivered some of the concerns that the city had, it was good for us to also hear what their concerns were.
Mm-hmm.
And this way, when we negotiate, we're negotiating a mutual understanding of what the concerns are for both parties. So I think moving forward, like the mayor said, I think, um- are for both parties. So, I think moving forward, like the mayor said, I think, uh, that'll, uh, uh, help us get something done hopefully quicker, uh, a lot faster than the, uh, the expired, uh, fourth amendment of the agreement.
Have you considered bringing the representatives from this organization in front of the council to?
From SGM? For negotiations, no. That's why we have the ad hoc in place. I, I, I don't think we can legally, if that's what you mean. But what we did discuss is if we move forward with SGM, that at least, uh, once a year, maybe twice a year, that they will be here in front of the council to give, uh, updates and reports. That was, that was definitely discussed and, and quite frankly, should've been done in, in the, in the past.
And I think they acknowledged that there was a disconnect in that, that in the previous years, that wasn't happening. So, we reiterated that, you know, this is important for the council to know what's taking place because we get questions asked, uh, you know, what's happening, what's taking place. At least this way, it's done in a public format where not only can the audience see this, but also the people that stream through that as well. And the council, of course, knows the updates that was taking place with the, uh, golf course.
And I wanna acknowledge and thank Susan O'Hara for her efforts as well. Again, kinda coming in on that interim, uh, besides the day-to-day operations, we were asking her for quite a bit of information that went back five, 10 years with SGM and those contracts. And so, to coordinate just our city team to get that information, uh, it took a while. It, it did. And then, uh...
You, you're standing ovation.
Yeah. I think we have, we, we have that information and, uh, we're, we're making some good progress. Yeah. Mr. Rodriguez, if you have something to add?
Yes, please. Um, so, thank you very much, Mayor. So, one point of clarification, too, is that the 180 days simply allows us, if for any reason, if, if the, if the, if the negotiations aren't progressing as, or, or, you know, how they probably should be, the 180 days does provide the city the opportunity to potentially go out for a request for proposal for a new operator, um, or for, or to have, or to have SGM simply rebid on, on the project. So, uh, based on this morning's conversation, um, I don't think that's gonna be the case, but, you know, but the 180 days does afford us that opportunity if we absolutely have to.
Do you have a timeline to, to, to decide, let's say, potentially down the road that you are not successful? Is there a timeline for that? I mean, I don't wanna necessarily...
I'm gonna defer to the ad hoc committee, but based on this morning's meeting, um, we had a very candid conversation. I know I, I met with them 10 or so days ago where, where I spoke to them at length. They've expressed their concerns. Uh, we've expressed our concerns. I think we've had a good discussion. We'll follow up next week. Um, I think next week or the next two weeks is gonna be pretty telling for us to see if we can come to an agreement. Cause the very first part of our conversation, um, is, is, hey, SGM, uh, how do you guys feel about this arrangement? Is it working for you? Because sometimes from our side, we may think that they may think it's a great business opportunity, but from their side, they couldn't, in theory, be losing money. And so, that was really the starting point to say, hey, is this working out for you guys? And then, just months, um, city staff is, is really taking a hard look at our numbers to see if it's beneficial for the city. You know, simply to make sure that it's working on our side. And when we started the conversations, that's where they've led. I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a very good idea if we can come to an agreement. Um, if we cannot come to an agreement, we're not gonna belabor the item. We're not gonna keep going back to the table. At some point, we, we're simply gonna have to say, you know what, this isn't gonna work out. And that's okay sometimes. Not all negotiations work out. And at that point, we'll come back to the council and we'll ask for direction.
I would agree. I would say if not, if not, uh, something very firm, or at least firm in direction, the first meeting in November, then definitely by the second, we would have something to report on. For sure. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Great. John, thank you very much. Hope you feel better. Mr. Rodriguez is also a bit under the weather. Item C3, this is consideration of a joint resolution of the city council. I'm sorry?
We have to vote on it?
Oh, sorry. We have to vote on that, don't we?
Darn it. Darn the rules.
I can't see Hilda right there. You need to sit on a big pillow or something and... My apologies. On item C2, if there's no further questions, I'll call for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item C2 as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. My apologies, everyone. Item C3, this is consideration of a joint resolution of the city council of the City of Madera and the Madera Public Financing Authority approved in an agreement with Del Rio Advisors LLC. Mr. O'Hara.
Talk in this.
Scoot back a little bit.
He should've made him last.
Yeah.
Um, good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. This resolution is, um, a contract to hire Del Rio's, uh, LLC to, uh, go out and, and investigate the, uh, opportunity to refinance our 2010 water bonds. Um, Mr. Decker, who is with us this evening, and will give you the details on that refinancing, uh, brought to our attention through his work with the NG project, that with interest rates being so low, this might be a really good opportunity to, um, look at some of our other debts. And he did a little investigating and has found that this, uh, may very well be a really good opportunity for us. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ken Decker of Del Rio, and he will give you the details.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors. Let me, uh, pull up, uh, where do I go here? There it is, bottom one. Sorry about that. Okay, so, um, I wanted to brief you on a possible refinancing or refunding opportunity. Um, in November of 2010, the Madera Public Financing Authority issued water revenue bonds in the amount of 11.2 million dollars. Uh, call those the 2010 bonds. The proceeds of the bonds financed various capital improvements of the water system, funded a debt service reserve fund for the bonds, and paid the cost of issuing the bonds. The 2010 bonds are callable on March 1st of 2020 with no prepayment penalty, and the interest rates range from 3% to 5%. Earlier this year, I spoke to Mr. Rodriguez, uh, on the proposal to refinance this. However, uh, due to the passage of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017, the ability to advance refund these bonds, which is meaning that you could call the bonds prior to 90 days before the call date. So, right now, 90 days before the call date would be December 1st of this year. We could not conclude a refunding prior to that date because they eliminated what's called advanced refundings in that act. Um, so, this is the first opportunity we'll have now to be able to retire these bonds at much lower interest rates, uh, closing or anticipating closing on or after December 1st of this year for the March call date. The original amount was 11.2 million. The amount outstanding is 9,530. The final maturity is March 1st of 2038. The estimated amount of refunding bonds would be 8.1 million. Uh, again, that's because right now, in this environment, uh, bondholders want premium bonds, given the low interest rate environment that we're in. So, we're actually, uh, selling bonds at a premium, so it's a lesser par amount than the bonds that are currently outstanding. Total savings would be just over $3 million. Average annual savings of about, uh, almost $171,000 a year. Net present value savings of $2.7 million, or about 28% net present value. Now, that's an insane net present value number. We've had this incredible drop in interest rates. CDAC generally give guidelines of 3% to 5% net present value savings. This includes all the costs of issuing the bonds and everything as the guideline. This is at 28%, so this is kind of insane. You don't see many refundings in this range right now. Part of the reason for the drop in interest rates has been, um, a lot of volatility due to the trade sanctions or the trade war going on with China and elsewhere. Um, the tax act eliminated advanced refundings, which took about 20% of the volume out of the municipal market. And because of the $10,000 cap on state and local taxes, has increased demand for municipal bonds. So, you have this huge demand, this reduction in supply, the impact has been to drive interest rates lower. For example, uh, just to give you an idea, in October of last year, the 10-year treasury was at 3.2%. Today, it's at 1.6%. We wanna be able to try to take advantage of that market. Yeah. Councilman Rodriguez is gonna pounce all over that.
Well, no, just a question on that is, have we seen these rates lower? And can we expect them to be even lower?
Have we seen them lower? I, I think for a brief period of time, we did. Um, I wanna say in July of 2015 or 16, somewhere in, I've got a graph someplace that I could bring up. But yes, I think we've seen them slightly lower in previous periods. But I think the fundamental issue here is the supply and demand has driven. So, interest rates in the taxable treasury market have definitely been lower, even though we're at 1.6% today. I think we got down to 1.2% or 1.4% during the heart of the Great Recession. But what's happening is the tax exempt market has come down even faster because of the issues I discussed.
Yeah, and, and that leaves, just begs me to ask the question again, is, uh, can we see something much lower? And only because when there's an inversion of that, you know, rates continue to go down. Have we seen floor and possibly increase, or?
I will tell you, having done a bunch of refundings over the last few months as these rates have continued to drop, you're beginning to see real pushback from investors. Uh, because real yields are so low, they're looking for other alternatives to move their money to. So, I think you have a floor here that's defined by what the buyers will purchase, not necessarily what the market says interest rates should be. So, the treasury market, we may end up with an inverted yield curve. We may end up with negative interest rates. But the muni market will never go that low because buyers just won't purchase munis. They'll look for alternatives.
I see.
And then, we've already started to hear that from particularly retail investors, mom and pops that buy municipal bonds. A lot of them are saying, wait, I, I, you know, I, I've got no place for my money, but tax exempt's at 1%, half a percent. I mean, those are crazy low yields. So, they stopped buying them, looking for alternatives.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, this assumes market rates of, uh, about a month ago. Uh, the market's been moving all over the place, but the dynamics have not changed. One thing I did wanna point out, the existing bonds mature on March 1st of 2038, but it does have a reserve fund set aside. That's a pot of cash held by the trustee that's generally, if not used in the event of a default, which clearly is not gonna happen, then that would be used to pay the final year of debt service on the bond. So, the effective final maturity of that bond is 2037. Because we're not planning to fund a reserve fund with the refunding issue here, either through a direct placement or through the purchase of a surety bond in place of reserve fund, we would make the final maturity on the refunding also 2037. So, the same effective maturity date. So, no extension of the term and actually shortening by a year to match up what your existing bond would look like. So, since we are approaching December 1st, um, and conditions are incredibly favorable to do this refunding, I mean, these are insane savings, um, I would like to recommend that we explore both a direct placement and a public offering and choose the most economical option. The council has now done both, uh, working with me, direct placements on the police station, the golf course lease, uh, public offering for the fire station financing. The market is kind of all over the place. We got some indicative rates on the direct placement, uh, when we ran the numbers, but, uh, it didn't work quite as well as the public offering. But a lot of the really aggressive lenders are not willing to give indicative rates. So, I'd like to go out and sample that market, compare it to the public offering, and then choose the most economically viable option. Um, and again, I already spoke about the effective maturity, but date of the bonds. So, anyway, um, I'm asking tonight to, uh, to engage me to, to, to take the next step. Um, I would go out and secure fee proposals from underwriter placement agent, um, and from public finance law firms to act in the role of bond counsel and disclosure counsel. However, the way I would do it is, if it's a direct placement, we only need bond counsel services. If it turns out to be a public offering recommendation, we need both bond and disclosure to prepare the official statement. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have. Mr. Decker, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Decker? No? Mr. O'Hara, please.
Hilda told me I need to make this comment. Um, by approving, um, this resolution, it also get, would, um, give the mayor the authority to sign, uh, Mr. Decker's engagement letter. So, we've taken the majority of his engagement letter and put it into our standard contract, but there is some, um, regulatory language in his agreement le- letter that he needs on file, um, for himself. So, this resolution would also give the mayor the authority to sign that letter. Is that right, Hilda?
That's all I'm doing, is signing a letter.
Yes.
I'm not signing, I, I don't have access to the checkbook.
No.
Susan, since you're up there? Uh, I did, I asked you a question and, um, full disclosure, I had sent you an email regarding the, the annual savings of 170,000.
Right.
So, because this matures in, um, 2037, I mean, that's a considerable amount of savings. Can we use any of that, um, anticipated savings to bring back, uh, in some way, the water fund to reduce the rates? And I think you had answered the question regarding the annual, but the overall picture, how would that look? And if that's a question that would, that maybe be asked at the next, uh, water, uh, survey, but I just wanted to ask you if that could be a considerable amount of savings for the consumer.
Well, and that, as I, as I responded, um, in your email, um, on an annual basis, that equates to about a dollar per customer per month. Um, if you, if you divide the 170,000 by our 14,000 customers, um, what, what it will do is help mitigate other rising costs. So, as, as in the future, if we go to do a new rate study, which, um, I'm assuming will happen here at some point in time, um, that will be taken into consideration. What, what goes into that rate study is the combination of all of the expenses that are incurred in the process of delivering water to the citizens. And so, if the debt service is less, um, I, I don't know that it'll have a significant impact on reducing the current rate, but may have a, a, a very small, um, amount of mitigating any future rate increase. But I, I know it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but in, in the big picture of the entire water fund budget, um, again, it's a dollar a month. It's $12 a year per customer.
And I know this isn't about the water budget, so, uh, I can reserve those comments.
And I, and I can appreciate what, what you're saying. Um, and over the course of time, it, it is a significant savings, what, like $3 million. But also, costs in that, in that timeframe continue to go up.
Yes.
So, it's a, it's a balancing.
Good question to ask.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
If I may make just one more comment.
Sure.
I'm also, would, would like to point out, ti- time is a bit of the essence here because we clearly have this incredible market. Um, I would like to bring this back as soon as possible with the recommended financing, financing team members back to the council so they can begin work on moving this forward. And then we'll, I think, plan to come back to the council to present, um, the documents and the recommended structure, depending on which way we decide to go.
Great.
But would like to move forward rather, rather quickly.
Looking forward to that. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Move to approve item C3 as presented?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item C3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to administrative reports, item E1, this is consideration of a request to designate a voting delegate and alternate with direction on how to vote on conference resolutions for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And also to direct the city clerk to submit the voting delegate from the league. From the league, for the league? The delegate formed to the league. Oh, it's a tough one. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, this year, we have two city council members that have indicated a desire, uh, and they're registered to attend the League of California Cities Exposition in Long Beach, uh, later this month. Um, that would be council members Garcia and Robinson. The League of California Cities has indicated that there's two opportunities to vote on different resolutions, which would be submitted, um, on behalf of, of the various cities, uh, to the League of Cities, um, to then forward to, to either the state legislation or the federal government. Um, the council this evening is not obligated to, to identify a delegate, um, or an alternative, but again, it, it's completely up to the council. The two items that are being considered, it's an amendment to Rule 28, and that's the undergrounding of overhead utilities in, in, in fire hazard areas, um, in terms of extremely severe areas. The city of Madera is not in those areas. Um, and then the second one is a discussion or, or, or to call upon the state of California and the federal government to, to take action on, on public water ba- uh, ways that impact, specifically, uh, the Coachella Valley, San Diego, and, um, and, um, and then our neighbors to the south, which would be Mexico. Um, some of those waterways are heavily polluted. And, um, some of the, um, and some of the Southern California cities have, have indicated a desire to have the state of California try to step in, to try to help mitigate some of that with some transcontinental agreements between the US and the federal government and, and, um, so the Mexico government. So, with that being said, it, um, again, probably not two issues that directly impact the City of Madera. However, I do think that it's a great opportunity for the City of Madera to be represented, to attend the sessions, to see how they function. Um, so in futures, say either next year... So in futures, say either next year or the year after that, when there's something that directly impacts the city, I think it's always a good opportunity. So with that being said, it's up to the city council. I have not had the opportunity to either speak to council members to see if either of them would want to be. So the city's delegate, but that's up to the council to decide this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over.
This is for the annual conference?
This is for the annual conference, and it would only be for those three days for the voting. And the voting takes place on November the 18th, which is the last day of the conference, which is a Friday. I'm sorry, October, not November, October the 18th, which is a Friday.
And so, next year's conference, would we have the opportunity to have two different delegates? Or this is from this point forward? So each year, they would ask us if we wish to?
Yes, correct.
Councilman Gallegos.
City manager Rodriguez, is it possible to also nominate somebody from staff that's attending? If I read that correctly, or does it have to be elected officials?
I will confess, I'm not too sure. I thought it was elected officials.
Elected officials.
It's elected officials. Thank you, member, councilwoman.
I would assume so, but I don't, I wouldn't know either.
There are a lot of rules in that report.
I just kind of simply assumed it was an elected official.
Yeah. Any direction, questions? Thank you both for going all that way and representing the city of Madera. I appreciate that. And it's always great, as you had mentioned, Mr. Rodriguez, to have a seat at the table, that these don't, some of these issues don't necessarily directly impact us, but as I had mentioned before at the housing authority meeting, the fact that we get to interact and meet with other voting delegates throughout California and kind of compare notes, not only to these issues, but other issues. So thank you both for attending and look forward to what you can bring back.
So.
Mayor and council, just a point. I do, I'm looking through the documents and I can't see anywhere where it's restricted to council members, but one thing you might want to do is designate your city manager who's going as an alternate. And if they say he's not qualified, then they can tell him that, but that, you know, you can always do that, in my opinion.
Councilman Robinson.
I've been doing it for the past seven years. You just go in there and you vote.
Yeah.
Nothing big, nothing.
Yep. Councilman Rodriguez.
I was going to ask if Councilman Robinson had done this in the previous years, and I think you answered that question. So I don't know if this would be a good opportunity for Councilmember Garcia to be part of that, since you're going to be out there and this would be your, maybe get your feet wet and maybe give that valley voice, you know what I mean? I would nominate that you'd be the, and we'd have Councilmember Robinson as an alternate. Maybe he can guide you on what takes place out there. Not sure if that's something that the council would agree on, but.
I think I would just add, and add Arnaldo as our city manager as our second alternate, because my understanding was you designate one person and two alternates, right?
Correct.
I would, that's a great suggestion.
If they don't let him, then they don't let him.
I'd like to amend my, to add, yes, I think that would be great if that's something that the council would agree on.
Sure.
So then, do we have to decide also how the city's going to vote right now?
So not necessarily. If the council did want to provide some feedback or some comments to Councilmember Garcia or Councilmember Robinson, I think that would be appropriate, but it's really the prerogative of the council.
So with that, I'll ask for a motion or direction on that particular case as far as nominations, and if there's any other input to send with our voting delegates.
So move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Councilman Garcia as our primary voting person with Councilman Robinson and our city manager Rodriguez as alternates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that was at the annual League of Cities Conference, by the way. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to item F, this is council member reports, announcements, and an opportunity for any future agenda items. With that, I will start at my far right with Councilman Robinson.
Yes, I have attended the APAC Regional Leadership Academy at the Fresno Center in Fresno under the Pacific Islander Caucus, and enabled me to sharpen my skills.
All right. All right, that's always good. Thank you. Councilman Gallegos.
I just want to do a shout out to some of our staff. Alicia, thank you for setting this all up for the old timers' day parade as council members. And our fire department for having our truck, our brand new fire truck out there, and Chief Lawson for having two patrol cars out there to represent our city. So thank those individuals that drove us, we truly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well said. Councilman Garcia.
We had a great time, as you can see, some of the photos of us that's on the council at the parade. I want to thank Letitia Gonzalez from Max Rodriguez, Supervisor Max Rodriguez's office for setting us up with vehicles. I got to drive around in a beautiful 1968 Chevy convertible, and I got a different perspective of the parade, sitting from the middle of the street on top of a car, so I just want to thank her for that. And thank all of you also for your help.
Imagine riding a bicycle in the middle of the street. Councilman Hawley.
As in to report.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, well, in that parade, I also got an opportunity to meet with one of the candidates for the Congress, and you know, with that, I got an opportunity to submit an application to go to USC. It's USC Price, where I got a scholarship from the Latino Caucus to be out there and take on some leadership classes. Again, that was provided by them, so it's not an expense to the council, but nevertheless, it'll be a very good opportunity for me to go back there and bring back some valuable information as far as what we can implement to our communities and help with leadership skills that we can utilize here in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Montes.
Yeah, I was at the parade too, in case anybody didn't see the pictures. I was at the very top of the fire truck. So thank you, everybody. One of the things that I did notice after, passed by through the parade route, and it was pretty clean. And in other years, it hadn't been, and people had made comments. So thank you to all staff that was involved with that, and thank you for making it a fun event.
It was very fun. The big thank yous and shout outs to everybody that was mentioned. And before the parade, we had talked about Nixalinas and the Lions Club, the Evening Lions Club, and all those involved. It seemed like a bigger turnout, maybe, than the past. I know the Lions Club ran out of food at the park. There was a lot of people that stuck around afterwards. It was just an absolute great, great event, the community came together. So again, thank you all. PD and Fire for riding us around, that was really cool. I got a lot of comments about the new fire truck, by the way. Some people still didn't know that we have that in town yet, so we'll keep driving that around as much as we can. That's all I have, everybody. Thank you all for sticking around, I appreciate it. And with that, I'll ask Hilda for an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. In closed session, there's a few items. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, two cases. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, Arnoldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, and Shay Johnson, and the employee organizations, our general bargaining unit, Madera POA, Mid-Management Employees Group, and Law Enforcement Mid-Management Group. And finally, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, and the case is MCA 1803 LLC versus City.
Great, thank you very much for that. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on all the matters on the closed session agenda. All members were present and there is no reportable action.
Great, thank you very much for that. And with that meeting adjourned.